Acquorum is present, I will now call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by sections 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting of the board will now be held, the time is 4:46pm. You may now disconnect.
Executive session is adjourned and the board is now in open session. The time is six twelve P M. I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented?
I know as far as a move we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion. A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the superintendent evaluation as presented.
I, Linda Sherard, second the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Linda Sherard. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to authorize the board president and board secretary to execute amendments to the superintendent's contract of employment on the terms discussed in closed session?
I, Ramon Garza, move we authorize the board president and board secretary to execute amendments to the superintendent's contract as presented.
I, Linda Sherard, second that motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Linda Sherard. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, in the administration building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is one four seven zero five Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero one five. The time is six fifteen P M. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on today's agenda. Agenda, agenda, sorry, agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for the meeting as permitted by section five five one point zero seven one two five five one point zero eight four, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off in a silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for the interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We, we have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per policy, B E D local, may address the board regarding matters of concern or interest to the district. Other than the character of any student, staff, and board member, I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions or opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of speakers. Please understand that a lack of a response from board members does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The vice president of the board will be the designated timekeeper. Ms. Terry Moore, will you please step up to the podium?
Good evening, President Stevens, our Board of Trustees, Dr. Moore and Cabinet. Thank you for indulging me for just a moment. As you know, Galena Park I S D has a relentless pursuit in excellence, and therefore I'm asking for your indulgence for a few moments to read in a proclamation requirement to receive the District of Distinction designation. So whereas Youth Art Month has been observed nationally and in many foreign countries since nineteen sixty-one and has gained wide acceptance, and whereas the arts education is a viable academic endeavor and contributes educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students to develop interests, skills, and aptitudes that will last a lifetime, whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experience in all students' education, and whereas the Galena Park Independent School District commends the Texas Arts Education Association for its commitment to promote quality visual arts education, and now therefore the Galena Park Independent School District hereby proclaims and officially recognizes March two thousand twenty-three as Youth Art Month, and asks all stakeholders in our community to become interested in and give full support to quality school art programs for children and youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Tonight's invocation will be presented by our superintendent, Dr. John Moore, and the pledges, pledges to the American and Texas flags will be led by North Shore Middle School, L O T C, Color Guard. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, Galena Park I S D and our entire community has had a really tough twenty-one days or so. We've sent several students to heaven, and it's been really hard on our parents, our staff, and most of all, our children. Please place a hand on the entire community, but most of all, our children, and help them grieve and understand that life is tough, and they have to be tough to deal with it. Please also look out for those who are looking out for the people in need. Through the last three weeks or so, we've had counselors, many of our central office staff out on campuses, dealing with grieving families, grieving teachers, and grieving children, and that's extremely emotional and extremely hard to do time after time after time. So please show us a little grace in the future, sir, and give us some time to recover. For the last twenty-one days have been hard on everybody. In your name we pray. Thanks.
Amen.
Color extension, carry colors. Forward, march. March on, march. Colors, hope. Let's face. Present colors.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Order, colors. Outward, face. Forward, march. Colors, hope. Hope, colors. Present colors. Order, colors. Forward, march.
You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
All right, so we don't have a very big crowd tonight, but we sure appreciate those who came for coming, right? And I don't know about you guys, the spring break starts next Monday, right? We can't get there fast enough around here. So once again, thanks for coming, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Moore.
All right, thank you. And joining us on stage for tonight's recognitions, we welcome trustee, Mr. Asparza. This evening, we would like to first recognize Ardent Mills, represented tonight by Mr. James Bell, for the donation they made to the district's agricultural department. Mr. Bell, would you please join us on stage? And also here to thank Ardent Mills is Toby Castro, G P I S D's Director of Career and Technical Education, and Patricia Alvarez, Galena Park High School's Agricultural Science Teacher. Ardent Mills is a premier flower milling and ingredient company that helps communities thrive. With this donation, the G P I S D students who focus their studies on agricultural, food, and natural resources will be able to extend their knowledge and learn skills. So thank you very much to Ardent Mills and Mr. James Bell for helping prepare our students. Next, we would like to recognize the two thousand and twenty-three Spanish Spelling Bee winners. Here accepting on their behalf is our G P I S D Spelling Bee Host, Secondary E S L and Languages Other Than English Program Director, Ms. Michelle Smith. If you'll please join us on stage. Unfortunately, our two campus, our district winners were unable to join us, but our two thousand and twenty-three elementary winner was Angel Arieta, and our secondary winner was Sitlali Rodriguez from the Zoots Education Center. So a big round of applause for our student winners and our campuses, and thank you very much.
Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I do. I want to wish everybody a happy spring break next week. I know everybody's excited. Have fun and stay safe.
Anyone else? Ditto. All right. Ms. Barbara Garrett, Director of G P I S D Childcare Center North Campus, will present the academic spotlight with a video highlighting some of the outstanding programs and initiatives at all G P I S D childcare centers.
Good evening, President Stevens, trustees, Dr. Moore and Cabinet. Hi, I'm Barbara Garrett, Director of Childcare Services for our North location. I'm here to invite you to take a look into the services provided to our youngest G P I S D population. First of all, I'd like to take just a moment to introduce some of our team members', parents' that have joined us tonight. Thank you very much for your presence. Tonight's presentation is a video highlighting some of the services we provide. Please enjoy.
Hello, I am Dr. Michelle Epps, Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, and I have the honor and pleasure of working with programs that service our youngest population. Here in Galena Park I S D, we offer a variety of outstanding programs and services to meet the needs of our students and employees, such as our two licensed childcare centers and our early head start program. Please listen as the directors of these amazing programs share about the work they do and the services provided.
Hi, I'm Barbara Garrett, Director of the North Childcare Center, located on the corner of Barbara May and Duncanon, next door to North Shore Elementary. Our vision is to provide a safe and development-appropriate environment for the children of Galena Park I S D students and employees, which support the parent's role as the child's first teacher. We opened this location in twenty nineteen for approximately six months and then had to close due to COVID. We are happy to be back providing services such as healthy meals provided by our student nutrition department, quality facilities that include dynamic indoor and outdoor play spaces. Learning through play is our primary focus all day, every day. Our classrooms and other play spaces are equipped with supplies and materials to spark curiosity and a love for learning. In our centers, health and safety practices are assured, and age-appropriate sensory motor skills are developed. Our overall health practices onsite are enhanced by a full-time registered nurse that supports us for any major or minor concerns such as bumps, bites, scratches, and bobos, and works externally with doctors and parents to meet the overall health needs and concerns of our children. Language development is enhanced through the child's interaction in everyday experiences and language arts activities. Pro-social behavior is promoted through interaction with peers and adults in a caring and loving environment, which respects the uniqueness of each child and sets the stage for the child to become an active participant in their education and an eager lifelong learner.
Hi, I'm Diane Sharp, Director of Galena Park I S D's South Childcare Center, located in Galena Park on Second Street. Formerly known as the PEP Center, the program began in the early nineteen nineties to provide for to provide for Galena Park ISD students who needed childcare in order to continue their education. Eventually, we expanded to provide affordable care for district employees as well. And now the children of employees are the largest part of our enrollment. Over the years, we have achieved national accreditation through NACY, the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And we earned a four-star rating, which is the highest, from Texas Rising Star, which is the quality rating system for childcare in the state of Texas. Our approach focuses on the whole child. Young children learn best through play, social interactions, and relationships. Our childcare staff are trained to initiate these type of interactions and create a classroom environment to facilitate this way of learning. They regularly assess children's physical, cognitive, and social-emotional development, and then use that data to implement strategies supporting each individual child's growth. All of our staff receive regular and extensive training each year to equip them to provide quality care. Many hold a Child Development Associate credential, and some have an associate's or bachelor's degree or are working towards it. We encourage our staff to continue their education, and some have even gone on to become certified teachers in Galena Park ISD.
Hi, I'm Anna Lada, Director of Becker Early Head Start, located in Galena Park on Second Street. Our program's mission is to prepare students and engage families for school readiness and lifelong success. This program is designed to provide full-day education services and to enable the parents of the enrolled students to move towards self-sufficiency. Becker Early Head Start is a year-round federally-funded program that provides comprehensive services to infants and toddlers of low-income households and pregnant women. Families must meet the poverty guidelines to qualify for services, and those who do qualify receive services at no cost to them. Early Head Start offers a variety of services to meet the overall needs of its families that include education services, social services, health and safety, and disability services. Becker Early Head Start program has served this community since 1999.
Hello, I'm Chanelle Gottfried, Education Coordinator of Becker Early Head Start. We have the privilege of providing quality education services to children's ages zero to three from the Galena Park ISD community. This program requires that our teachers possess at a minimum an Infant-Totter-Child Development Associate credential or higher prior to being hired, allowing us to place highly qualified staff in all of our classrooms. Head Start Performance Standards mandates that we implement a 1 to 4 teacher-child ratio. This allows the teaching staff to provide high-quality, early childhood education.
Hello, I am David Von Aaron Jenkins II, and I am happy to be the Family Services Specialist here at Becker Early Head Start. We take a holistic approach to working with our families, and our program design helps us understand every barrier and need our families have, and we effort to give them the tools to be successful. We work to have families connect with the educational process and their impact on their child's academic success and well-being. We provide structured opportunities for parents to attach to the school and its processes. We want our families to understand that we are a resource for the entire family, and we have provided services that include enrichment, community involvement, employment, skills training, and emergency services as well.
Hi, I'm Natalie Rodriguez, Health Specialist of Becker Early Head Start. The Early Head Start families receive case management services to ensure the health and well-being of their students. Our program works with families to ensure students are up to date on immunizations, dental exams, and well-child exams according to the health step schedule. The Early Head Start program also provides supportive services to expective families that are built upon the strengths and needs of each family.
These programs are a success largely in part due to the support received from our Board of Trustees and Superintendent of Schools, as well as our partnerships with programs such as ExxonMobil, United Way Bright Beginnings, the Texas Workforce Commission, the Office of Head Start, and the Texas Association for the Education of Young Children Scholarships. Thank you, Ms. Garrett, Ms. Sharp, and Ms. Lada for sharing about our exceptional programs.
My name is Marissa Ramirez, and I'm a teacher at Galena Park Middle School. What I like most about the South Childcare Center is that it is very tight-knit, and it feels like a family.
It's very convenient, especially on those staff development days. I don't have to worry about where my child is going. I know my child is safe.
We've been talking, and we've been thinking about moving out of town or moving somewhere else, but we don't move because we're very satisfied with this program.
I know, like, some team moms that drop out, and I was scared that I was, I didn't have any support from anybody. The school and the teachers and the director, they all always supported me, and they allowed me to go and study more.
As soon as those kids walk through the door, they always, "Hi, good morning, how you doing?" And they call them by their name. It's not, "Hi, buddy," or "Hi, little girl," it's their names.
My favorite thing is working with the kids. I love especially the toddler, the two-year-olds. I kind of make them feel like, kind of like, they're my kids too, as well.
As an educator, I know all too well the immense responsibility that we have to ensure that children are safe, loved, and happy at school. And now, as a new mom, I get to see that through a new lens, and I cannot speak highly enough about the childcare center.
We're like one of the many districts that have a childcare for our kids. Even when I post a picture of my child, everybody's like, "What daycare is that? What does she do there at?" And I'm like, "Oh, it's a district daycare."
They don't just teach them and just sing with them. They actually teach them their numbers, their ABCs. I love it. I just love it. I love everything about it. I do. I really do. I do.
You can see the love that the teachers have for them. I never have once doubted that they're being well-cared for because everyone's genuinely happy to see my children every day.
Are there any questions?
I just have a comment. I would, it's me. I just want to say that this is a very important program for GPISD. We appreciate your service to our students, our community, our parents. We appreciate, thank you, and appreciate your dedication to the program. So thank you and great job.
Thank you, Board of Trustees.
Well, thank you to Ms. Hunter and her absence and her dynamic team that helped us pull all this together. Thank you guys so much.
We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. All right. Jared Link, Executive Director for Human Resource Services, Compliance and Hearing, will present the Texas Association of School Boards' Localized Manual Update 120, along with CDC Local, Other Revenues, Gifts and Solicitations, and DEA Local Compensation and Benefits Compensation Plan is presented for the Board of Trustees' Review at First and Final Reading.
Thank you and good evening, President Stevens, Trustees, Dr. Moore, members of Cabinet. So tonight, we have Update 120 in front of you. Update 120 is going to address the following topics: Board elections, emergency plans, student and parent complaints, as well as student discipline. The first policy is BBB Local. The recommendation to BBB Local is to correct the policy so that it accurately reflects the district's method of election, which is by position and not pure at large. CKC Local: Safety Programs and Emergency Plans. Education Code 37108D requires the district's multi-hazard emergency operation plan to include responding to a train derailment near a school if a district facility is within 1,000 yards of that railroad track. We just had another one on the news this morning. FF, not in our area, though. FFI Local: Student Welfare. The district policies must address the prevention and mediation of bullying incidents and comply with the minimum standards adopted by TEA. FNG Local: This is our parent grievance policy. The revisions are to clarify how special education complaints are addressed, encompass all instructional resource policies, and reference the required hearing procedure for eligibility disputes under student nutrition programs, free and reduced lunches. FO Local: Student Discipline. The revisions are to address when a restraint may be used with a student in general, and specifically when a restraint in regard to a student who receives special education services. Those are your updates to 120. We do have two additional policies: CDC Local. This policy is recommending to allow the superintendent the authority to accept unsolicited donations of any value. There are the exceptions of the gifts if a donor has made conditional upon a specific use or any gift of real property. Then the final policy is DEA Local. This policy is recommending that we clarify for non-exempt employees who are required to work during an emergency closure. In order for those employees to receive premium pay, their work must be in direct relation to the mitigation of the hazard that required the district to close. That is all our policy updates. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Sunny, I'm sorry, Harold "Sunny" Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 bond program construction update.
Good evening, President Stevens, Board, Dr. Moore and Cabinet. Every time I bring pictures to you all, I try and find something interesting. What's on my mind? I think I've said that before. But this one here on Pyburn, I thought, this is kind of like the what's missing from the picture. And it's very important, the gas meter is missing in the picture on the right, and the picture on the left is them digging up to find the end of the gas line. And that's for old Pyburn Elementary School, so demolition of the old facility will go in earnest here in about a week. So that was great news. Great news. That was the interesting part in that picture. Here, we're about to wrap up. This will be the last big roadway concrete pours. We do have a sidewalk soon to be poured, Mr. Garza, that I know is near and dear to you in people's hearts over there. That'll be poured here in the next couple of weeks at the longest. And then here, that's, I believe last time, I talked about some spread footings and some grade beams. So the steel you see in front of you is the rebar for those grade beams that will be poured, and that would be, of course, at GP High, Galena Park High School Phase Two, getting the dining commons constructed and our CTE addition. Any questions? What questions might you have?
Yeah, I got a question. You know I'm gonna have a question till we finish this.
Yes, sir.
So I know you said February. I know we're March 6th. I'm glad I didn't go to Mass this weekend at my parish.
Okay.
Because I went to Mass at another parish. But I'll be there Sunday, so... And I know I should have got with you before, like, Ash Wednesday, because Ash Wednesday was horrible.
Oh, goodness, sir.
So it was like, it was so... So what are we looking like now?
Less than two weeks. Sidewalks will be in.
So it'll be in before Easter. We should be done before Easter, because then we're gonna have another...
I had that confirmed just this evening because I anticipated your question, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, hopefully, I don't have to ask you no more questions in April.
Please, anytime.
And it'll be after, our next board meeting will be after Easter, so that's why I'm asking you now.
Very good.
So we got this recorded, right? You said two weeks. Okay.
Yes, that is recorded, and I asked before the meeting very specifically about that sidewalk. Very concerned about all, everybody over there, but I knew that was of special importance to you. So yes, two weeks, weather delayed a lot of our concrete. You know, we get the rain through. It always comes at the wrong time, but that's...
Thank you, Sunny.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. We will now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to reaffirm and re-adopt numbered-at-large positions and related actions?
I know, Asparza moved, we approve the resolution as presented.
I know, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. Is there a motion to approve additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies as recommended by TASB Policy Service and according to the Instruction Sheet for TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 120 at first and final reading?
Aye, Norma Hernandez. Move, we approve TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 120 at first and final reading as presented.
I, Noe Asparza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Noe Asparza. All in favor? A motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. Is there a motion to approve revisions to the district policy CDC Local, Other Revenues, Gifts and Solicitations at first and final reading?
I, Wanda Johnson, move, we approve revisions to district policy CDC Local as presented.
Aye, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? A motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. Is there a motion to approve revisions to district policy DEA Local Compensation and Benefits Compensation Plan at first and final reading?
Aye, Norma Hernandez. Move, we approve revisions to district policy DEA Local as presented.
Alenda Sherrod, second the motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Linda Sherrod. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. With respect to the General Consent Agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Ramon Garza, move, we approve the General Consent Agenda as presented.
I, Noe Asparza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Noe Asparza. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the Construction Consent Agenda?
I, Wanda Johnson, move, we approve the Construction Consent Agenda as presented.
I, Linda Sherrod, second the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Linda Sherrod. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. With respect to the Financial Consent Agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
Aye, Norma Hernandez. Move, we approve the Financial Consent Agenda as presented.
I, Wanda Johnson, second the motion.
A motion was made by Norma Johnson, I'm sorry, Norma Hernandez, and seconded by Wanda Johnson. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. The following documents were presented to the Board for information. Dr. Sonya Nizey, Chief Officer, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented: Donation Report for February 2023, Tax Collection Report for January 2023, 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of January 31st, 2023, General Fund Budget Summary Report for the period of September 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2022. Mrs. Liz Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented: Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes from January 2023, Early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary from January 2023. Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary from January 2023. There being no business before the Board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:50 PM. Thank you.